To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing is to approve the agenda. Motion to approve it.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
You have a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And passes. We have the minutes of the seventeenth of July, twenty twenty five, before us. Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next thing on our agenda, we have approval of resolution for interfund transfer. This is a resolution to take the money that we received from our general obligation debt service, which was the interest that we accrued during the period of that debt. I will read it. This is Resolution twenty twenty five, Resolution for interfund transfer. The resolution by Henry County to close the general obligation debt service account and transfer the balance to the general basic fund as authorized by Iowa Code, section three-three, one point four, three-two, frame seven-five, and twenty-four point two-one. Whereas the general obligation debt service levy for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year has reached its maturity and whereas the remaining balance of one hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, and whereas the Iowa Code, section three-three, one point four-two, and section twenty-four point two-one provides the interim transfer of inact funds. Now therefore, to resolve that the general obligation account to be closed in the balance of one hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-five cents and transferred into the general basic fund agreed on this day, the twenty-fourth day of July, twenty twenty-five. The motion to approve this resolution. Do we have a motion? I'm sure a second.
Yes, I second.
Second. Discussion?
Just the discussion, just again, just to make clear where it's all coming from. So this is from the bond that was created once the maintenance facility was created there, at that facility, correct, for the salt, the hoop building and all of that?
And then we parted over.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. And so this is what's left over out of that bond and then we're moving it over?
Yeah, it was paid off, um, the end of May, I believe, wasn't it, Robin? It was paid off and then this is what, yeah, it's left in the account.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to just sit there, it needs to go somewhere.
Right, exactly. I'm going to scroll back to the general basic fund, right?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll call vote.
Dietrich?
Yes.
Mende?
Yes.
White?
Yes, sir.
So I do have one question. So there will probably be a little bit of interest at the end of this month for that. And you don't have a problem with me just moving that into that account, do you? It'll go on the IP account.
Maybe a little bit more than what we just...
I understand that, but you would part it as a state auditor tab, that you'd be got...
It'd be fine.
Well, just move into the IP treasures account because it's in the IP account. So, okay.
So this amount, any addition?
As of right now, this is what's in that account.
Can I answer your questions, sir?
Thank you.
So, Robin, I'll give me a copy.
Copy, yeah, a invoice check.
And then a, and just, um, introduce the other sheet. Okay, thank you.
Next thing on our agenda is our county engineer, Dr. Cruz.
Tell them to call vacations, tell them to call work. Fair? Fair one, well. So, thank you. Uh, first item today is a resolution, so it's Resolution twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-five dash twenty. Whereas the county engineer has completed his speed study on Franklin Avenue and W-55 and Salem Road, J-20, at the city of Salem and recommends the following speed limits. Uh, J-20 Salem Road, west side of Salem, eastbound, forty miles per hour, starts six hundred and fifty feet west of the West Corporate Line, twenty-five miles per hour, starts at West Corporate Line, continues to East Corporate Line. The west side of Salem, uh, westbound, forty miles per hour, starts at West Corporate Line and continues six hundred and fifty feet west, and fifty-five miles per hour, starts six hundred and fifty feet west of the West Corporate Line. The east side of Salem, eastbound, forty miles per hour, starts at the East Corporate Line and continues east for five hundred and fifteen feet, fifty-five miles per hour, starts five hundred and fifteen feet east of, ah, sorry, five hundred and fifteen feet east of the Corporate Line. The east side of Salem, westbound, forty miles per hour, starts five hundred and fifteen feet east of the East Corporate Line, and twenty-five miles per hour, starts at the East Corporate Line and continues to the West Corporate Line. W-55 Franklin Avenue, the south side of Salem, southbound, forty miles per hour, starts one thousand and thirty feet north of the South Corporate Line and continues south for two thousand and thirty feet, fifty-five miles per hour, starts one thousand feet south of the South Corporate Line. The south side of Salem, or northbound, forty miles per hour, starts one thousand feet south of the South Corporate Line and continues north for two thousand and thirty feet, twenty-five miles per hour, starts one thousand and thirty feet north of the South Corporate Line and continues to the North Corporate Line. And then finally, north side of Salem, the southbound, twenty-five miles per hour, starts at the North Corporate Line and continues to one thousand and thirty feet north of the South Corporate Line. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Henry County Board of Supervisors in session this twenty-fourth day of July, two thousand twenty-five, that the above speed limits be installed as recommended and effective immediately.
Please, we have this motion, a resolution, a motion to approve.
Yes. Yeah, with a little discussion.
We have a second, so a discussion.
So, uh, we are in the process, or hopefully today we'll be in the process, of updating the speed limits as you come in and out of Salem. So I said a mouthful there, so, you know, it's probably pretty hard to follow. Essentially, we've established there's four, uh, four routes that come into Salem, and we're cleaning up the signage and establishing what the speed limits are. So, worked with the sheriff a little bit, uh, through some discussions about this, uh, city of Salem as well to discuss that as far as jurisdiction goes. Those are farm-to-market extensions, um, that the county has the authority of establishing, uh, the signage and the, the speed limits as you're going through. So, after the discussion, uh, we're looking at, essentially, it's forty miles per hour as you come into town, as you approach town, and then when you get to the city limits or within those re- region, regions, it goes to twenty-five miles per hour. Um, the, after discussing some stuff with the city as well, we elected to get rid of the twenty miles per hour on the square and go just to twenty-five, so there is no deceleration after you get in. It's twenty-five on the farm-to-market extensions all the way through on both directions. So, essentially, we're just cleaning that language up and then if you guys approve this today, then we will start working on updating the signs that make it more apparent what the speeds are as you come in and out of town.
Okay, you had another conversation with the folks in Salem, something about an incorporated city that's less than five hundred population, the county has.
That's where the FM extensions come in. We have jurisdiction on those routes. So just the, we have jurisdiction on the road, we're not responsible for the whole ride, but we're just responsible for the roadside with like the twenty-four feet or whatever. And then, you know, we obviously have some say in how the drainage and stuff goes, but that's, that's the authority that we have to make telling you this. So, anytime you're under five hundred, then that's where it kicks in. There's another little caveat in there as far as if you're fluctuating back and forth about who's in charge of it, but in this situation, Salem has to be under five hundred.
Um, and then the other thing, right around the school, right now that's posted at twenty.
Uh, it is posted at twenty during school sessions.
Correct. And that'll stay in effect or changed?
No, that will, that will, that sign will come down. We have, we're putting up the flashing, uh, feedback signs for speed for twenty-five.
Right.
Um, and that will be going up. And then at the crosswalk that we've just redone, there'll be flashing red beacons during school session, so it's more clear when school's in session. Uh, one of my concerns is that it's not always easy to know if school's in session when it's effective. So, the stop signs, when they're turned on by the school, uh, that is very clear as there's action going on. So, we feel like we've got a very more visible location. We just got done redoing the sidewalk, crosswalk there, so now it's not dumping into the parking lot. It is tying into a sidewalk, so it's very clear on where they're supposed to cross out.
Yeah, it is very clear. I was by there, I've been by there a couple of times, so it looks better and it's a lot more visible, for sure. Yeah, and it looks good. Thank you. Yeah, good explanation.
No, I, I think from what Jake has filled me in on, it's a great plan. It's consistent on all four paved entrances into the city, uh, going in or, or, or going out. I, I think it's, it's good work.
The only thing I've heard obviously is from the folks that, that were there that night, and I think you had to leave maybe, but they were a little concerned on the south side coming into that S curve because that's where the, the trail comes into effect right there. And then on the west side where Kelly Anderson's house is, there was a little concern just because of the speed coming into that S curve, so.
And we did adjust that from the original plan when we were looking at it after some discussion about, uh, there's a park trail that dumps, um, onto the county road, it's kind of like kind of the unique thing. We did stretch that twenty-five back to the city limits where we're at now, so that got adjusted back. The south end, there was that, there was that issue with the semi on going through and doing it. Obviously, it appeared like, I didn't actually talk to Rich about that recently. My appearance would be is that they went very fast and were driving.
Missed that condition.
Yeah, we're driving.
It was foggy and they, they didn't see the curb coming or the signage. And we've had lots of wrecks coming in from all four different directions, so.
Correct.
Uh, to date though, we have, in the last ten years, one of the data that we look at is what's happened the last ten years. So some of these crashes that we're talking about, there hasn't been a fatality to my knowledge in the last ten years that I saw in I-CAT, which is our crash analysis tool that DOT has now. You might be able to correct me, but it's been, we look at a ten-year window. That's all I can see from the data online ends. I think there has...
Our last fatalities were over ten years.
Okay.
And so some of this stuff that we're doing is trying to update the signage. But as far as putting more flashing signs, I think there was a request from a resident that we should look at one at the south end. And like, right at this point, the signage, I want to see how this works. I don't think it warrants it yet from what we're seeing. I think driving conditions was the bigger factor.
You have a question?
Good discussion, thank you.
We'll call vote, please.
Dietrich?
Yes.
Mende?
Yeah.
White?
Yes.
Okay, I got a couple of permits here for you guys to review or to approve. Um, one is a sanitation, um, outlet. And Jared is taking a look at this and it is on, uh, three hundred and fifth street. So, that's up to you there. And then the other one is a self-applied dust control permit. Kind of came in late. So this one is on two hundred and fifty-third street, so it's actually down by open mills there at the... And then the last permit is a utility permit with wind stream. This is for Old Highway thirty-four. They're doing a short section of, uh, install of fiber.
You said that was on Old thirty-four?
Old thirty-four, yeah. So just, uh, west of Goodyear Road.
Speaking of Old thirty-four, so, uh, I've heard lots of comments from the folks in Jefferson County in reference to a highway coming out of Lockridge on Old thirty-four, about how rough it is and how...
It's marked.
Maybe it is, east side of Lockridge, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with that? You followed up with their county engineer to see what, what the difference was with their section versus our section?
Drainage, I, I think that's what he would tell you to, is that, uh, you're in, in town there. He's trying to, I mean, the, on our end, we're out in the open, so I'm going to speak on our. On our end, we're out in the open, you cut, put drainage shoulders in and to allow that drainage. So drainage is key. Uh, when you get into an urban setting, there's a lot more issues you have and then budget constraints that you might be dealing with, so, um, that, I'll just talk on our end. I know what, so far it seems we've worked it on our end. So we had a, our, our section went down really well, make majority of their section went down fine too, which is drainage, actually.
Yeah.
Most pavement problems usually come back down to drainage.
That one's got a lot of bumps and waves and came back, I think, to semis and heavy trucks breaking and causing those bumps.
Correct, yeah. Uh, anytime you have an intersection that, those are some issues you had to address. We had it in Salem with our asphalt and eventually that made them...
Let me just see, I know I don't have to sign any to put it in the...
Oh, these are the permits?
Yeah.
And then the resolutions somewhere.
I got it right here. I'll put, give it all back to you.
Okay. Um, but yeah, that's, uh, some things go well and sometimes it doesn't always go perfect and they'll get it fixed up, so, yeah. Um, so then from a maintenance update, uh, culvert replacement on Lexington. Yesterday, we worked on a repair of the culvert on Lexington Avenue, that'd be just south of the airport road. Um, Salem is where we spent a lot of our time this week. We have the sidewalks board. When I say sidewalk, it's the ADA, uh, crossing. Uh, while we were in there, we did, uh, the city is going to reimburse us for a short section. We did, uh, originally they were going to take care of it and it was just really bad. It was more of a tiny thing, like to leave it like that wasn't going to work well. So, we worked out a deal where they'll reimburse us for our time and money and then what's, or cost for the material to do that, but more about getting the thing done and moving on is what we're working out to. Uh, pavement markings, we've completed all centerline and edge line. Uh, they worked on some stop bars over the last week and today they're cleaning up the machine and preparing it away for the year. So, that kind of drove on this year a little bit just because we had, uh, some different projects trying to get done, but they got down through Salem yesterday, got the crosswalk put back in and stop bars put on. Um, so that's going well. Boom mower, we've been working at various locations on gravel roads. Again, they're trying to get some of that brush cut back. Typically, we can reach about twenty feet from the road and that's what we're trying to affect. Um, we do, we did receive one, one concern, a complaint about our, our tactics on that. And that's not uncommon, but it is one of the more effective tools for us. It just doesn't always leave things looking nice when it's done. But as far as covering ground, that's what we have to work on, so. Shoulder disc, various locations, again, uh, the mowing, um, excuse me, shoulder disc is on the motor grader. Again, they're just trying to work on some of these smaller sections, like the half-mile, quarter-mile section, whether they pull and saw it up and pull on that edge over. So you might see some rough sections of gravel road, but again, they're trying to take care of that runoff or the drainage on the edge. And then the last thing would be mowing our gravel roads. We were working on our second round again and that's going well. It's going faster now. Obviously, we got through the first round, so it's not quite as much, so the second round usually gets a little faster. And then miscellaneous construction, we kind of hit on Salem. Um, the only thing we really have left to do now is new signs. So we, we passed the resolution for speed limit, so we'll be working on that next week. And then we've got the two feedback signs and then two flashing beacons, uh, that Pete will be working on as well. So, uh, when I get back, we'll probably focus on the feedback. That takes a little computer programming and stuff that will work through that to get things set up. And then I talked about last week, Goodyear Road north of two hundred and thirty-fifth street here on Main Street, uh, they're going to be removing the earth shoulder, replacing drainage shore. Right now, the holdup is we're waiting on the milling machine to be able to come in and do the work. And right now, they're slated for next week, weather dependent. So as last week, they got pushed back pretty far on drainage and things like that. So, we're kind of at their mercy and just, we need to have two days to do the project, so we're just making sure things work right that way. And then again, I will be, uh, not available for next week's board meeting. I'll be back on the seventh. My eyes are right, yeah. So if you guys need anything or that, any questions?
Question, uh, another comment. Uh, citizen along Winfield Avenue extension, just on the extreme outskirts of, of Mount Pleasant, had asked me where the county was on their consideration for, uh, jake brakes or exhaust brake regulations on that. I, I know that has nothing to do with you right now or anything like that, but, uh, they, they brought that up. They're affected directly by semis coming and going and swelling and then things like that, uh, just east of the Walmart intersection right there, so. He asked me, he said, "Where are we at on that?" And I said, "Well, no determination been made yet. Still looking at it." So, it's still floating around up there.
Okay.
I'd like to ask for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. You agree with that? Pursue in there two, three?
What's happening, sorry?
I said you agree with that, you know, you're...
What are you trying to imply?
On the very...
What?
I will try to, yes, yeah.
Next thing on our agenda is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Development. Jed, do you want to say anything or we just take off from what we did last week?
Well, as last week, um, we, we had the presentation here, the Zoom call, or the kind of call anyway, talking about that. Uh, I, I guess we need to make a vote on which direction I vote on that board to combine or not to combine. Uh, if, if one county does not vote, it's my understanding that it would kill the whole process. So, I guess I'm asking authority and direction from you guys, which way you would like me to go. I'm, I personally am leaning towards the merge to allow the merge to happen with the understanding that the, uh, any reimbursements or anything be on a, a population proportionment type thing versus an equal type of dispersment from, from the counties. I think, uh, a county like Scott or Muscatine or Clinton with more population needs to be able to cover their base versus the smaller counties covering bases for them.
Okay, is my understanding that there's no money required from the county to support this?
Yeah, it, it, I, I've asked that a number of times. There, there's no money involved, no additional monies, uh, given out. Uh, it would be, uh, if there would be a reimbursement back to the federal government for programs that was, was, uh, implemented by the Mississippi Valley is where this proportion of thing would, would have to go back, you know? Henry County would have to be a, a population-based reimbursement that way, so. And that, that vote, uh, as soon as we make that vote, uh, at our meeting, I will share that with the director because there's, it, the time crunch is kind of coming up, so.
So I will entertain a motion that we would, uh, merge the Mississippi Valley Workforce Development with at least one other district, correct?
Yes. South Central, uh, District would be the absolute merge and then there's, there's talk about a, a possibility of another one. Uh, I've asked if there was any hiccups or, or, uh, second thoughts or anything about it and everybody that I talked to said, "No," that it's just kind of a common sense that it would allow sharing of administrative duties. Uh, South Central, uh, District down there would lose, would be losing some administrative staff that work for them. Uh, they would be absorbed, all that work would be absorbed by the Mississippi Valley. Uh, and it, it just seemed like a, a pretty clean and straightforward.
How many counties are involved in the South Central?
South Central, I think, has seven counties if I remember it, so.
I will second Mark's motion on the merger.
No, I asked for the motion. I asked for the motion. Is there a motion?
Let me, okay. I'll make the motion since chance.
You have a second?
No, I'll second that.
Any other discussion? We have the background and all knowledge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Next thing on our agenda is the first reading of the open burning ordinance. We have this before us. If anybody would like to have copies of it, we have some right here. We've had it available. This ordinance, uh, an ordinance to amend the Title One, Chapter Seven, uh, the penalty standard of the Henry County Code ordinance to adopt, uh, was adopted on August twenty-third, twenty-eighth. Modifying the Section one, ninety-seven, ninety-three by repelling and replacing the entire section. This is, uh, being ordained by the Board of Supervisors of Henry County. Iowa has followers. Article one, section modified, Title One, Chapter Seven, Article three shall repeal the entire and replace the following. County infractions, the violation of the code of ordinance or by any ordinance or code hereby adopted in reference to the emissions and, uh, failures to perform in any act or duty required by the same, with the exception of those providing provisions specially, specifically provided under Iowa law as a felony and a delayed misdemeanor or the serious misdemeanor or a simple misdemeanor under the chapters six, eight, seven, through seven, four, seven of the Iowa Code as the, as the county infractions punishable by the civil penalty as the, as the provided here in one penalties. Uh, the county infractions punishable by the code of the civil penalties. I'm right here, you're right, you're right. Am I reading right?
I'm not following it. I don't think so.
I don't think so either. All of a sudden, I think I'm reading the wrong one. That's the penalty section.
Can we just read it off there?
Do you have it, Steve?
Up on the screen.
All right. We have, okay, this, this has to do with a red flag that whenever the, uh, red flag...
Sorry.
Excuse me for my mistake here. This is, uh, importance of, with a red flag, clean burning should be allowed. Before I have that here.
You did this morning, I saw it.
Have it here. All right, let's start all over again. Do everybody wants to read this thing? I hear, I see, no, no reading there. So we have gone through this, we've had public hearing on this. And this is, uh, in short, uh, if there is a burn ban put, put on, uh, you'll have, uh, no open burning in the county except by certain regulations, uh, that are contained to. And we have... I'll entertain a motion to pass this, uh, first reading of the open burning ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Motion? You have a second?
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? Hearing them, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None. We are to have a second and third reading. Is there any reason that either of you see a reason to have a second or third reading?
I do not. I think we've gone over this numerous times and we've climbed to the point where I think we're very comfortable where we're at.
Motion to approve and to directly do the third and final reading that we, we can take these things, say.
I make the motion to go to the final reading.
Okay, you have a second?
I second.
Any other discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It is adopted. Sorry about that. You know, the, the two have, we've worked on them together over a while and got them interchanged. Next thing on our agenda is, uh, subcommittees. Any subcommittee?
I will be attending a Zoom meeting, uh, to do this Mississippi Valley merger vote. I'll, uh, let you know when that gets accomplished.
I had two subcommittee meetings. I had a Russ meeting last week. Uh, we elected officers. That was the major, uh, task for the day. And just so everybody's familiar with where Russ is, we worked with Keokuk, Jefferson, Van Buren, Des Moines, Henry and Lee. Those are the six counties involved. And again, this regional utility service systems. The only thing that came up in discussion is that, uh, the Wazza County has, uh, seen a new wind turbine company come into the picture over there, so they have started, uh, recruiting folks. And it's, the name of the company is Orion. I don't have a lot of details in that, but, uh, fairly new. They're already pretty well cemented in some solar energy applications and they've got a couple of big farms and two more in progress.
Is this a solar unit thing?
Yes. Uh, this particular one is Wind Turban. Yeah, Orion is the name of the company from the wind turbine perspective. The other meeting I had was with the Great River Housing Trust Fund. Um, we elected officers and board members.
officers and board members. Henry County has one open slot, so we can talk about it, we want to put somebody from private industry into the Great River Housing Trust Fund. Today, it's Rachel, Nandine, and myself from Henry County, so we have that opportunity. Uh, I've thought about a few folks that might be good opportunists for that position, I think we could look at maybe some folks from our, uh, that, that own rental properties and, and housing within the community, 'cause that's really what we're talking about here. Um, so, uh, we can talk about that, if you have any names or suggestions, I could forward those. Uh, the other thing that we talked about a little bit, and I don't know how many people are familiar with the Great River Housing Trust Fund, uh, but here's a list of projects that have been completed over the last six months. They do pretty good work, and one of the things, the only thing you need to be qualified to be able to apply to this is to be within eighty percent of the median income for the counties, so that would probably hit some of our older folks, low-income folks, obviously, but the jobs that they do are roofing, siding, windows, porches, steps, any of those types of projects would be applicable to what the Great River Housing Trust Fund would be able to do. Uh, we have a couple of projects that, uh, were in that range of about four thousand dollars, um, and some of those are in the process as we speak. They also do a lot of work with upper rental units, so businesses within a community, like a town like Mount Pleasant, those upper facilities that need to be remodeled so that can be rented out. There's a lot of that work going on, uh, mostly in Keokuk, as you can probably imagine, Steve, there you go, a few in Fort Madison, but really mostly Keokuk, and you've had three or four here in Mount Pleasant as well, that turned out extremely well, and there's some photos here, but, uh, some good opportunities, so if anybody knows anybody that might hit that, that category eighty percent or less than median income, there's some opportunity that we can help those folks out, especially, like I said, with roofing, windows, those types of things that improve the energy efficiency of the homes, and that really helps as well. Right, is, it for me, except I do have a Southeast Level Regional Plan meeting today today.
You know, not only for, uh, improved efficiency, I mean, it makes better curb appeal.
Oh, yeah.
When things are fixed up and repaired like that, too.
And that goes back into some of the older housing areas that people, uh, keep those looking good, so it improves the value, and keeps the community a little more clean, and I agree with your point.
You bet.
Or.
Yep.
This is a lower interest rate?
Correct. Most of it is a zero interest rate, and the dollars that are required from the homeowner is actually tied up into an escrow, so those dollars are paid off if and when that, that property sells or settles in an estate, and it's usually about five thousand dollars, and that goes back into an escrow, so it's no out-of-pocket money for the homeowner, so a really, really good program.
I had, uh, the Great River Regional Waste Door Meeting, uh, action items taken, we're, uh, changing, uh, modification of the, the design of our landfill and our expansion. This is something we've had in the works for a long time, it just finally took final action on it. It just allows, uh, for being a footprint on one sale, and, uh, we had other, uh, discussion on our transfer station from Keokuk and the rates of C and D, uh, material, and I think we have pretty well got that taken care of, satisfied all parties, no action taken on it, we're just implementing a, a policy and seeing how that works, so that was it, so it was a good meeting, short, and to the point. Uh, public comment at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Did you have one? I have a question and then a comment. Does the board control the budgets of the various departments? It does? So, given the fact that the Brady giggle of lists have resulted in outside councils, I'm wondering, since the county attorney's office is supposed to represent, um, county officials, if in fact their budget should in fact be used to provide those outside councils? Or if it could be considered? That's my comment.
Anything else on it?
That's it, just for your consideration.
Thanks, ma'am.
Anybody else? Hearing no other public comment? Um, motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn?
Is there a second? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.